So I'm going to call the regular board meeting of the Board of Education of Ponca City, our January meeting, I'm calling it to order. First of all, we're going to have the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Dear God, thank you for enabling us to gather here for this meeting. May we have meaningful discussions that will help us to build each other up and glorify your name. Help us to share things that will benefit our students, teachers, and community. Help us to deal with the different challenges that we are facing as a team. May we preach each other with respect and kindness to tonight, tomorrow, and each day in the future. Lord, create an environment of cooperation in this place and help us to be one in the Spirit. We make these requests in your name. Amen.
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Mrs. Rowland?
Present.
Mrs. Truch?
Present.
Mrs. Zimmershey.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda is presentations and recitations. Special presentation to the board members in appreciation for their years of service to the children of Ponca City.
Okay, well, if you've seen all the goodies around, our sights have gone all out to honor our board members. And Adam, if you will kind of display the board members' pictures as I talk about them, but there are over 2,700 school board members in Oklahoma. And January is always designated as School Board Recognition Month. And we honor the efforts of all the men and women in Oklahoma who helped to shape the direction of public education in Oklahoma and their collective focus on academic achievement as long and in addition to the well-being of our students. And these members tackle this enormous job of governing the district while preserving our core values. And these men and women will tell you that the last two years have been additional challenges than we typically face. So I would like to honor our board members. Not with us tonight is our president, Nancy Zimmershey. Nancy was elected in 2017, so she is actually completing her fifth year on the board. This is her first year to serve as Board of Education President, and Judy's filling in for her tonight. Nancy serves on one of our committee meetings. She serves on the Board Curriculum Committee meeting. And for those of you that don't know, prior to the board meeting, we have a Board Curriculum meeting, a property meeting, and a finance meeting. And we can only have two board members attend these meetings so that we're not violating the Open Meetings Act. So Nancy is one of our members of the Curriculum Committee. Nancy is a Ponca City Public Schools graduate, and she also has the unique perspective of a parent. She has one child who has already graduated from Ponca City Public Schools, and that's Veronica. And then she has two children at the high school, and they are Devon and Alex. She volunteers in our schools, not only on PTAs, but any of the booster clubs of which her kids participate. She's a wonderful voice on the board and wants our students to experience the best opportunities PCPS has to offer, and she is super proud of our district. So the next board member I would like to recognize is Ms. Judy Truch. She was elected in 2004, so I think you're completing your 17th year or starting your 18th year. She served as board president twice, and she is going to be the upcoming board president when we switch officers. She serves on the Oklahoma State Boards Association Region Three Director. She serves Garfield, Grant, K., Noble, Pawnee, and Payne County Board Members. She is also a member of the Board Curriculum Meeting. She and Nancy are make up the Board Curriculum Meeting. She's married to her husband Ralph, and her children, Amber and Heather, are PCPS graduates. And she has two grandchildren attending PCPS currently, and that's Gracie and Jackson. And Judy is a retired public school teacher, and she taught for PCPS. I didn't get the dates down, but you retired in 2002. I'm thinking 14 years for PCPS. Is that correct, Judy?
That's correct.
And she had a lot of other service prior to coming to PCPS, but she retired from here with 14 years' service here and taught at Lincoln and...
Just Lincoln.
Just Lincoln. Okay, great. Her perspective as a teacher gives her a different viewpoint as a board member because she understands the learning and teaching process. The next board member that I would like to recognize is Dawn Newsom. And Dawn was actually elected in 1999. He is our longest-serving Board of Education member. This is year '22. He served as board president 13 times, and that seems like a lot of times, but we didn't rotate there for a while. So he was board president for 10 years from 2000 to 2010, and then he served two more times. Dawn is the past recipient of the Oklahoma State School Boards Association Platinum Excellence Award, which is designed to recognize the time and commitment made by board members in continuing their education beyond the legal requirements. Dawn serves on the property and the finance committee. If you didn't know it, he is the manager of the Ponca City Airport. He's married to Lori, and they have two children, DJ and Andrea, and they are both PCPS graduates. Dawn happens to be the voice of experience on our board and has a great deal of knowledge about the operation and finance of PCPS after 22 years. He also serves on the hospital board, the hospital here in Ponca City. And during a global pandemic, his perspective on that board gives us a good perspective, too. He works diligently to best serve the students and the district. The next board member I'd like to recognize is Robin Riley. Robin was actually appointed in 2012. This is his 10th year. He's beginning his 10th year on the board. He has served as board president three times, and he serves with Dawn on the Board Property and Finance Committee meetings. And just so you know, our last finance committee meeting was one long meeting, and we actually needed lunch and dinner. That's how long it was. So we go through our 260-page board agenda with a fine-tooth comb. Robin is a retired Conoco employee, and he's married to his wife Cindy. Robin is a PCPS graduate. His daughter Jamie is a PCPS graduate. His granddaughter Taylor is a PCPS graduate. And currently Samantha, his youngest granddaughter, is a senior at the high school. And Robin spends many hours learning, reviewing, discussing, asking questions regarding all aspects of the district to ensure we continually grow and improve as a district. He is very visible at all of our activities. That's when COVID doesn't interfere. And this year, not only has he fulfilled his BOE duties, but he is one of our chief COVID trackers as far as new cases in the county. Sometimes before I even have a chance to look on the COVID alert system, he's texting me, "Did you see?" No, but I'm going to look." So he helps me out with that quite a bit. He obviously has the best interest of the district and our students as his main focus. And finally, I'd like to recognize Anna Rowland. She was appointed in February of 2021, so almost coming up on a year. She replaced our longtime Board of Education member, David Kincaid, after his untimely passing in December of last year of 2020. So she's completing her first year on the board. She serves as an alternate on the Curriculum Committee, so we can only have two members. So if Judy or Nancy can't be there, Anna steps in. She is the current NASNTI Grant Project Director at Northern Oklahoma College. However, prior to her current position, Anna was an elementary teacher at Garfield for eight years before making the shift to higher education. So she's a PCPS teacher. While a PCPS teacher, she served as our Ponca City ACT President and as an OEA delegate. She's married to James. Anna and James are both Poh High graduates. She has three children who are graduates of Poh High, Jason, Daxton, and Kamari, and two children who are current PCPS students, Lucas and Becca. And Anna has an unmatched passion for both education and the South Side of Ponca City. You went to elementary school at Garfield. You and James both did. So they live on the South Side of Ponca City, so she has unmatched passion for education in the South Side and her firsthand knowledge of the positives and challenges of education. And I mentioned earlier, during a typical year, these men and women bring a great deal of knowledge and experience to the table. They question, they bring ideas, they offer suggestions. They also have a different perspective, because a lot of times, if I do a press release, I will run it past one of these board members just to see. You know, I'm thinking as a schoolperson, that's all I know, and they can give an outside perspective there. So their outside business perspective really contributes a lot to them as a board member. They spend countless hours volunteering for no pay. They get no pay, serving the district and attending our events. And again, there are many hours behind the scenes that the public doesn't see. We come in here and have a two-hour meeting. I promise you, that's not all they serve in a month. It's constant. The last couple of years have certainly not been normal and have presented unbelievable challenge, yet they continue to serve. The safety of our staff and students is of the highest priority while continuing to support our students' academic and emotional well-being during this health crisis. There are no easy decisions as of late, but they spend long hours making thoughtful and deliberate decisions to best serve our students. It's been a tough couple of years on all of us, and it's been a tough couple of years on our board members, too. But yet, they continue to serve. I will have to say, they are true, truly wonderful assets to the district, and I admire and applaud each of them. Will you please join me in a round of applause for our board members? Thank you for all you do. And during executive session, Betty will be boxing up all the goodies. And I'm telling you, our people go all out. And Judy, at our region meeting, she brags about our district, and now they honor our board members.
They make them jealous.
They're like, "What?"
I said, "What did..." I always start out, "What did your board, what did your people do for you?" And they go, "Nothing." Or, "Well, they brought us cookies." And I said, "Well, let me tell you what mine did." And it's better every year, so.
Yes, thank you. That's really, really thoughtful.
Thanks for all you did.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry for the mask. If you can't hear me, I apologize. So I'll try to get as loud as I can. I was a teacher, so I have a pretty loud voice. Okay, our next presentation, Employee of the Month and Friend of Education Awards. The first one is Certified Employee of the Month, and it's Cheryl Snyder, Instructional Coach at Roosevelt Elementary.
Yes, Cheryl, congratulations.
Thanks for having us tonight. When we work in a staff full of great people, it's, you could probably pull some folks out of a hat, but these two ladies are exceptional, and it's really nice to recognize them this evening. I'll read you just a couple of things that our staff had to say about Cheryl Snyder. Says Cheryl Snyder is a selfless, humble person who puts her whole heart into our Roosevelt students. She is loving, kind, and patient without fail. She is the person all teachers seek out for personal and professional guidance. She's a leader, a friend, an outstanding knowledgeable educator, and a rock upon which many of us lean. Amazingly, she is a better person than she is an educator. She is an elite educator, excuse me, educator, and puts students first in all she does. Cheryl is the best of the best. My name is Dane Salaski. I get to office next door every single day to Cheryl. She's put up with me since August.
Dane's our new principal at Roosevelt, for those of you that might not know. Dane, you're recognizing with the mask.
Yeah, she gets there way before I do, and she stays as late as I do, and then we see each other on the weekends some as well. She puts every ounce of her heart into everything we believe in in our building, so very thankful for Cheryl.
The next one is Support Employee of the Month, and it's Elizabeth Stewart, Secretary at Roosevelt Elementary.
Ironically, on the other side of my office is Elizabeth Stewart, who keeps the other side of me upstanding. So let me read a few things that our staff had to say about Mrs. Stewart. Elizabeth Stewart regularly maintains and makes sure our school is safe and healthy. She is a nurse, advocate, and surrogate parent to our students. She makes sure students and adults are comforted, fed, and loved, even when they may be having a difficult day. Excuse me. Elizabeth makes sure that the office runs like a well-oiled machine. She's a PTA leader, a Roosevelt Run Coordinator, a fundraiser, and an outstanding mother. She is the organizer and leader of the summer school reading program and is loved and respected by every parent, student, and Roosevelt staff member. Ironically, Mrs. Stewart is also currently working on her elementary education degree.
Well, how about that? Hired.
Won't be long, and she'll be vying for that certified award as well.
Fantastic. Awesome. You're surrounded by good women.
Pardon me?
You're surrounded by good women.
Next award is Friend of Education, and it says Ponca City Church.
I could bring an extra bunch of briefs from somewhere where I'll just have to read from. But I do have Dale Deschaux.
Yes.
And he is, what is your title there?
I'm the Director of Storehouse Ministries.
Okay. And then Jessica Chet is a member of your church, and she is the one who, I guess, coordinated this with Ms. Penny, so if you two want to stand and be recognized, too. Now, I will tell you, Ms. Penny is the one who, and I'm probably not supposed to say, but she's got the teen living class that you guys donated this stuff to. So I'm going to read what was said about Ponca City Church.
Ponca City Public Schools, January Friend of Education of the Month awarded to Ponca City Church. Ponca City Church was nominated for January Friend of Education for donating huge cases of antibacterial wipes and plastic aprons to the teen living classes at West Middle School. This donation helped the students in teen living to safely clean the kitchens and work surfaces, allowing for a more safe and clean learning environment. West Middle School is ever grateful for the donations that you have given to the teen living classes at Ponca City, West Middle School. So Ms. Penny, if you would like, do you want to kind of give us an idea of how grateful and what your kids use these items for?
Absolutely. We got the donation in the beginning of fall, and was trying to figure out how to get these kids in the kitchen to cook, because the last few years, we've not been able to do that very well. And one day, it was like Christmas, this big old magic box showed up, and it looked like the store bought in a display case of wipes, and I hid it in my cabinets. So they can get it, and my kids are able to use those, and they are super excited. We got some plastic aprons, so now when they have flower fights, if they're not supposed to, they don't leave the classroom in gray shirts that they keep in a black one, as well as we got a whole bunch of plastic gloves and things from your church. It was super, we're super grateful because we're able to facilitate our lessons because of your donations. Thank you so much.
So nice. Thank you.
Our senior pastor, Michael Kramer, could not be here tonight. He's not feeling well, and so he asked me to stand there for him in the reception.
Thank you. Thank you.
And could we have all the people that got an award to go outside in the hall so we could get a picture?
Funny story, the only good thing that happened was for a flower fight. Inside was great.
Bye, Cheryl. Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, the next three is public comments, and since we don't have any public comments, we'll just skip that and move on to the number four, the superintendent's report with potential board discussions. The first one's about COVID-19 update.
Okay, and that's really all I have for you, actually, is the COVID-19 update. You can see where we've been the last four weeks. And January 4th, the risk level was 71.5. That's the highest it's been since about February of last year. And if I look weary, that's because I am, because it's been a struggle since all weekend and all day today, and I'll give you where we are with the COVID report. Since the last time we met, the CDC and OSDH changed their guidelines again. So we started out at 14 days in isolation. That's what a positive case has to be separated for. Now, if we have a positive COVID-19 test, regardless of anyone's vaccination status, they stay home. If no symptoms or symptoms are resolving after five days, they're released from isolation, and they can return to school or to work and wear a mask for an additional five days. Let me tell you what we're seeing on this. Our people, a lot of people don't have their symptoms resolving, so when we think they're going to close out, they stay a few additional days out, which is fine. We want them to. We don't want them to return. With our students who have opted out of the mask mandate, a quarantine, I'm sorry, an isolation is mandatory, and the OSDH will uphold those. If they choose not to wear a mask for five days, it's fine for them to quarantine for 10 days. We will provide distance learning and free meals, but here's what I will tell you, even if they've opted out of the mask, many times, they will commit to wearing the mask for an additional five days. Okay, how quarantines have changed? There's two options. There's two scenarios. So if someone has had their primary series of Pfizer or Moderna within the last six months, or their primary series of Johnson &amp; Johnson within the last two months, or if they're boosted, they don't even have to quarantine. They have to wear a mask around others for 10 days and test on day five if possible. So what we're seeing is, if they're not symptomatic, they come back to school and they continue to wear a mask. But again, quarantines, close contacts are something that the OSDH is not upholding just because they don't have the manpower and they can't do that. Here's what we're seeing. If it's a household close contact, if people live in the same house, if someone's positive, they typically convert to a case. If someone's, if they're a close contact, they typically convert to a case if someone in their household is a positive. Scenario two is if the vaccine, the primary vaccines, are more than six months old or more than two months old, if it's Johnson &amp; Johnson, or if the individual is unvaccinated, they stay home for five days and wear a mask around others for an additional five days. Now, again, we have no teeth in quarantine, so if they choose not to quarantine, masking for 10 days is required. I will tell you, when we arranged vaccines with White Eagle, Phillips 66, and K. County Health Department, all of those are more than six months old. They were anywhere from January to March of last year. A lot of our people have been boosted. So those are the changes in the quarantine guidelines, in a nutshell. And here are the district percentages. And we did not start to school on Monday, I guess it was the third, because it was a teacher work day, so we had only had kids for four days. At the end of the day on Friday, you can see how many staff cases we had, 11 in close contact and 11 positive test isolations, and that's the most we've had since, boy, September of this year. You can see our student cases, and our total was just over 5% if you combine the 485 and .87. Been a long time since we've seen 5% positive. We've been running just under 2%. At the beginning of the day on Monday, we had a lot close out because the quarantine guidelines with the shorter isolation and the shorter quarantines, we had quite a bit return. But I will tell you, starting about, where's Jennifer, 7:00 last night, people had been at the clinics for like hours. Here's the problem, there's no problems getting vaccines anymore. Testing is delayed. So they are requiring the send-off test, and it's taking three or four days, and our people are waiting hours. So it was like a COVID burst after 8:00 last night. So we were working on that till 11:00, 11:30 last night. And here's where we ended the day today. I'll show it to you with another view. We can look at staff and students, and here's how I've color-coded these. If they're zero, it's green. If they're between .01 and five, I color-coded in yellow. More than 5% out, which is our standard attendance rate, I've got that color-coded in red. And that's at the end of the school day on Friday. So I'm not going to read those to you, just take a look at it. Pretty high percentages, much higher than usual. And then here's how we ended today. Well, it's not really how we've ended. This is what we had recorded as of 4:00 PM today. Nurse Webb, our COVID facilitators, up there still working, that's how far behind. So as of time to prepare for this board meeting, here's where we stand. Now, what's deceiving? If you look at Poh High, we have six positive test isolations in effect. We have seven more who are waiting on test results, so they can't come to school. We don't count them as a COVID positive until we have that test. We can't just start saying, "Oh, we're assuming they're positive." So I will tell you, the high school is our most vulnerable site today. So we're going to make it tomorrow, and then we'll play it by ear. I will reach out to you if we have to come to a point where we go to distance learning at the high school. If it's not our goal to go distance learning district-wide. Are pretty high, at 9.17, 33 students. But again, we're in the same boat with our students. We have that many waiting on test results.
I beg for reference to emphasize your point. I know of one high school student that mid-afternoon went up to get tested. Three and a half hours wait was the best time she got the entire afternoon. One place told her, "Call back tomorrow, and we'll try to make an appointment sometime tomorrow."
It's tough.
So it's going to be a lot worse than what you're looking at right there.
Oh, without a shadow of a doubt, and we can feel that. We have one employee, we were talking about it, Terry and I were just before we came in here, that has been at urgent care lately. And we still don't have a result. So it is not good. I'll tell you where we're the most, Garfield, where we're the most vulnerable, is Poh High and Garfield. Garfield has zero confirmed, but we have five or six teachers waiting on tests, and we really don't have that many teachers at Garfield. So we are at a tipping point with Garfield. If we have one more person that goes out to test, we can't cover. So we're going to see how tomorrow goes.
Did you say that they're sending them away for the long tests, all of them, or the PCR?
PCR.
These were the short test.
But the, so they're doing short tests and long tests?
But they're not counting it as positive if their symptoms just started on this day.
They wait on the long. But they still make...
Correct.
But they don't call them a close contact, they're just kind of a...
We don't have them at school.
Right.
If they're waiting on test results, we do not have them at school.
But they don't really have a name on the chart. There's nowhere on, they're not on the chart anywhere, is what I'm saying, like, right?
They're on our log as awaiting test results. Once a test result comes in, we'll move them over to the log, and then it will go into our formulas, and they will count on our spreadsheets.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't lost them. We're tracking them, and we're just waiting.
Wow.
We've kind of got this process that Kristy and Jennifer and Nurse Webb and I try to manage, and then the site COVID facilitator. So it's a lot of work and a lot of moving pieces, but here's what I can tell you, these are not accurate. Here's what I'm hopeful, it is coming in fast and spreading fast. I hope it stabilizes fast. So, you know, if you'll remember, we had this at the beginning of the year. Here's our picture district-wide, where I've done both staff and students combined. So you can see, it looks like Lincoln is probably our highest combined with 8.73, with the exception of CMP Central. But I split out our others so that we could actually tell. And if you notice, we only have seven at CMP Central. The servers at the high school are with the high school staff numbers. The custodians at Garfield are with the Garfield numbers. We have transportation, which is on its own, our bus... Um, we have transportation, which is on its own, our bus drivers, our bus assistants, our central transportation. So, those numbers look really high, but they're not. We did put out a press release, um, today about the please to download the app in case we have to have a push notification, uh, and can, or transition a site to distance learning. And we're in a vulnerable spot with our bus drivers. Not anybody can drive a bus. You have to hold a CDLB. And, um, Adam went through with Randy today, and they looked at the route that would be the least impactful on families if we asked them to bring them to school. If they're late, we will work with them on a tardy, or if we have to run a bus route late, we will do that, and obviously, they wouldn't be counted tardies. But we want our public to know that that could happen. Uh, here's where we are year-to-date on our weekly totals. And if you'll remember, this big week, it was the week of 8/29, first week of September was a huge spike. You can see where we went in school. We had a huge spike, and then we drastically went down. Then the week of the second, which I believe was a Sunday, because we, we work COVID seven days a week, um, we had 60 positives and 287 close contacts. Now, the week of the ninth, which was Sunday, and Monday, the 10th, look where we are. We're at 59 positives after two days, after the entire week last week, and 129 close So, we'll see where this goes. We can't predict. Now, if we look at our historical data, it looks like we're going to have fewer than the big spike, but after two days, I can't say that we will. But I just want you all to know that I may have to call you. If we go to distance learning, it will be because of a staffing issue, and that's where we are. Um, we have a lot of subs that are ill as well, so we don't have subs coming in, and we just can't leave our sites vulnerable. Tipping point at the high school and at Garfield, as of this 10 seconds, things can change overnight. So, I will tell you that it looks like we're canceling our, I'm sorry, not canceling, rescheduling our basketball games tomorrow night with Putnam City Original. They, their athletic director had called and gave us notice that they had seven positives on one team. Well, we've got several positives. I just said, let's reschedule. So, Jason has called their athletic director, and he's supposed to tell me what, text me once that's confirmed. Jason Levitt, our athletic director. Uh, here's the cumulative totals of contacts and ca-, cases per site as of 4:00 today. Those are live numbers, and there's more with this, i- if the larger the site, the more cases and contacts we have. So, I do have one proposed change to the Return to Learn Plan, and if you'll remember, by federal order, masks are required for all public transportation networks. That date got pushed back again to March 18th, and public transportation networks include school buses. It started out as a September date, and we changed it because that was the law to the January 18th date. Well, it's already been pushed back to March 18th. So, um, that's what I'm asking that you consider to change on the Return to Learn Plan tonight. And this just says that our masks are required indoors at all PCPS facilities during normal school hours with opt-out exemptions offered. So, people can, our staff and our students can opt out of the mask requirement. It's during the day. Just in case you wonder, we don't do this in the evening at our activities. It, it's a choice. School's compulsory, and we want our kids protected. People can make the choice not to come to an activity. So, this is just the chart. Basically, all I did was change the mask are required on buses by federal order through March 18th of 2022, and none of the other protocols changed. This is on our website and stays there. And do you have questions or concerns or thoughts?
Do you think that you'll have to do any elementary classrooms by site or classroom switch?
Okay, so here's our protocol on the flipping classrooms by site. If we have three positives in three days, we automatically flip a classroom. We haven't had that yet.
Okay.
Well, we've just been in school for, since five days.
Okay.
But. But at this point, we're more likely to move a site to distance learning.
Because of the staff.
Because we're struggling with staffing.
All right. It's the only question I have. Thank you for the report.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, that's it.
Now, do we need to vote on that plan, the revision of the plan?
Yes, I think it's the next agenda item.
Okay. Okay, so, consideration and take action on, on Return to Learn Plan. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to take action.
Okay. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Robin. Okay.
Call for the vote. Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Okay. The next is a consent agenda, and we only have three items. The agenda with commentary, minutes from the December 13th regular board meeting, and contracts and agreements under 10,000. Do I have a?
I'm in for approval.
Okay.
Second.
Call for the vote. Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Next one, ac-, uh, action items, motions required. Uh, consideration and take action on the following district financial reports description. Number A is FY '22 budget amendments. B, FY '22 general fund two or 11.
11.
Incumbrance in the amount of about $2,000, little over $300,000.
Two.
Two million.
Two million.
Two million. What'd I say, three?
Three hundred.
Okay, sorry.
That's all right. Hard to see, and, and your glasses are fogged.
I know. Um, FY, uh, C, FY '22 building fund 21 encumbrances in the amount of $1,000,000, about $870,000. D is FY '22 child nutrition fund 22 encumbrances in the amount of 61, about $62,000. Or do you want me to read the exact amount?
That works.
Okay.
They've got it right there in front of them.
Okay. E, F2, FY '22 gifts and endowments, Fund 81 encumbrances in the amount of $35,000. And number F, change order listing as 1322 for funds 11, 21, 22, and 81. G, budget analysis reports. H, bond fund reports. I, Booster Club fundraiser request. J, activity fund reports request. K, treasury reports. And L, ratification and approval of payrolls. Do I have a motion?
Yes. I have motion to approve.
Motion by Don. And seconded by Robin.
Yeah, we had a lo-, we had a long finance meeting talking about those.
Did you, you had, it really lasted that, how long did it last?
Three hours.
Three hours, okay.
1:30 or so when we got through.
About three and a half.
We started at 10.
Okay.
2:02.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Adam was wondering why we didn't bring lunch in.
He was hungry.
I'm sure he was hungry. He's kind of a bottomless pit, I found out.
Oh.
I think. Okay, number two, consideration and take action on the revised board policy, Section 2, Community Relations, charges for the use of facilities.
Make a motion to approve that item.
Second.
I believe this was the one that we had a typo, and we were only charging, what, $10 for the lights, wasn't it, Adam?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
That's when I thought it was.
We reviewed it last month, and.
Yes.
Yeah, you went there, but we looked at, yeah. It was just that one.
Okay, and this was.
Call for the vote. Okay, Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Okay, number three, consideration takes, take action of the following contracts and agreements. A, contract with Kagan for Cooperative Learning Institute Training Commentary. And this is going to be, uh, this contract will provide five days of Cooperative Learning Institute training for 55 district-certified teachers. Training will take place June 10th, 6th through the 10th, 2022. The total cost is $35,695 to be paid with Title II funds. Does anybody have any questions for Terry to answer?
How do, is it, how do you decide which teachers?
Um, they, Terry puts out a survey, and they let her know if they're interested in coming.
They sign up. It's a, it's a first come, first served.
Is there?
We're always full.
Always full?
Mm-hmm.
That's good. I just wonder, I didn't know if there was any kind of a track for teachers who were on, um, improvement plans or anything that were required to take any kind of, or.
Well, we couldn't talk about that because it's a personnel issue.
I just meant like, if there was, like, if something, they're like a track, not like.
If we want someone to get in the class, we'll make sure they get in the class.
Suggest it, right. Yeah, Kagan's a really good training. I like that one. So, that one's here in the building, again?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, Kagan 55 is really all we can fit it there.
The room.
With all the activities they have, you do, huh?
They have to move around.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. B, contract with Kagan for win-win discipline training. This contract will provide win-win discipline training for up to 55 district-certified teachers. Win-win discipline teaches staff how to identify the four types of disruptive behavior, to recognize the seven positions from which they spring, and what to do in the moment of disruption while learning to follow up and prevent future disruptions. Training will take place March 11th, 2022. The total cost is $12,045 to be paid with Title IV funds. And Terry will answer questions on this, if you have any.
I, I've got one thing that Mr. Riley.
Don and I had asked for.
Mr. Riley asked me to find out about the difference, $12,000 for one day and $35,000 for five days, why the cost difference? It's materials. If material, the materials on the five-day, uh, training can be spread over five days, but the material for, materials for a one-day training, it goes in with the one-day cost. So, our teachers get a lot of resources that they take back to their classroom, hands-on, in their hands. Theirs for life, or stays with the district.
Stays with the district.
Yes.
So, is there more material in the one-day class than the five-day total class?
No, but that's, all the material charges are on that one day. And see, okay, let's say materials, let's just say $10,000 are materials. That's not right, I'm sure. Then, the $10,000 on the one day would be within the cost, and the $10,000 on the five-day would be spread at $2,000 a day.
I also think.
So, that's why it's.
The per-day cost is what?
That's why the per-day cost seems so high on that one.
I think if I remember the trainings right, too, we had, with the institute training, we had, it was almost like one major focus, you know, um, on one day, and then the next day. So, you'd have all your materials for that one day, and then, so for this win-win discipline, that's all one training. So, that's why you have all those materials for that one training, and then it's, but the other ones is spread out. Is that what you're saying, kind of?
Right.
Yeah.
So, it's not instructor cost?
No. Terry called, as a matter of fact.
Any more questions on B? Okay, C, program agreement with Oklahoma State Regents for Higher Education, 2021, 2022, Oklahoma Teacher Connection, Teach Oklahoma. Teach Oklahoma is a project that targets high school junior and senior students who possess high academic and leadership standards and are chosen to participate in order to encourage them to consider the teaching profession as a viable career choice. The agreement outlines the criteria of the Teach Oklahoma program and serves as a grant application for funds, if available, to be used for field trips and/or curriculum to support the Teach Oklahoma class. And this class will be offered at High, at Punk City High School, second semester of the 2021, 2022 school year in collaboration with the existing internship program at Po High. The class is based on student interest in becoming an elementary or secondary educator. This class will not require additional staff at this time. Curriculum and training are provided by the State Regents Program, and the course will be called Teach PC. Delana Hawkins will answer questions.
And I do want Delana to go ahead and give you a little synopsis. Uh, you all may have seen in the news that Oklahoma City University has canceled their teacher ed program because there's not enough interest. U, uh, UCO has canceled their early childhood program because there's not enough interest. So, we're going to grow our own teachers. So, Delana, I'm going to let you talk about the teacher, and how many students, and how they will participate in internships.
Well, we, we have an opportunity late in first semester with the return of one of our teachers who have gone to Epic, and this teacher was very interested in sharing her passion for education. And at about the same time, there was a survey done for career interest, college career interest of our juniors and seniors, and we have about 20 indicate they want to be a teacher after high school. So, that is awesome. And to build upon that, we were able to, uh, this contract, if you approve it, costs us no money. It's basically saying that we will honor the curriculum that's provided by the Oklahoma State Regents. Um, the Oklahoma State Regents does this program and will provide us funding, if they have any, to support that teacher and that classroom. And right now, we have five that were able to fit it in their schedule, and possibly continue to go on to college then to be teachers. Um, there are scholarships available with regional universities if they commit to going to those schools in their teacher education programs. So, it's kind of a build the, grow our own program and encourage our own students to continue down the road of becoming a teacher. If you have any questions, I'm happy to.
How many students do you forecast for next year? Obviously, hopefully, more than five?
Yes. Yes, hopefully more than five. It's a good sign that we have five now, as quickly as it was able to be put together. That's a, that's a positive sign. And then, we can start with those five and build into the word getting out and it being advertised through course selection or program.
I'm assuming this is elective, so if, if the schedules would have allowed, could it, would have you had more than five?
That was an issue with the 20. Um, now, some of the 20 were underclassmen, so we can build that freshman sophomore group into the junior senior group. We actually have one, uh, we're trying to correlate it with the internship program, and we have one that it worked out to potentially be an intern at one of the elementary schools at the same time of taking the class, which gives all the more practical application of the curriculum. So, yes, I would hope for it to grow. Now, that, you know, honestly.
Who knows?
Mr. Riley, that's going to be on how well it does and how well we get the word out.
Who's your instructor?
It is Ashley Campbell.
We, we're proud of those five, and, you know, if, yeah, our intern.
Five more teachers.
We'll pay if they do an internship, and, and something you may not know, which is kind of related, but not related, is we have an intern bus assistant.
Fantastic.
So, and an intern, you all knew this, helper at the farm.
Mm-hmm.
Student intern.
Yeah.
I like the name, too. Teach PC.
Okay. So, what, do I have a motion to approve these three, the two contracts and the, and the new program? What?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve.
A through.
A through, but C. D, C.
A, B, C.
C. A second.
Okay.
Hey, roll call. Uh, Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Okay. Number four, consideration to take ac-, action in accepting subcontract bids for the Union Elementary Renovation Project per construction manager report. Bids were received on December 9th, 2021, at 2:00 PM at, for the Union, uh, renovations project. Bid packages received and listed for approval totaled $1,169,278.76. and seventy-six cents. Also received and requesting approval are alternates number one, renovate family restrooms for twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. And alternate number two, wheelchair lift for forty-five thousand, ninety-six dollars. The current estimated guaranteed maximum price with alternates number one and number two totaled one million, two hundred and forty-two, five hundred and sixteen, uh, and seventy-six cents. Adding limbing and con, Collar Construction Group Incorporated will answer questions.
Okay, I think Adam needs to make a change. We need to amend this agenda item. He caught something and just got a text. I got a text from him, so Adam, if you will.
Yes, uh, so, and this was presented to our property committee. Um, this is not an estimated guaranteed maximum price. This is the final guaranteed maximum price for Union Elementary. And, and we talked about that in property meeting with choosing those two alternates. Um, we were able to secure all the bids. Um, and that comes in under, uh, what we had estimated for the Union project. So, I think the property committee was, without speaking out of turn, ready to make that a final recommendation to this board.
I'll make a motion to approve this item.
Second.
Do we have to amend it before we?
No, it's in the commentary. We're okay.
All righty, thank you.
Call for the vote. Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Okay, number, that passed. Number five, consideration and take action on accepting subcontract bids for the Howe restroom renovation project per Construction Manager Report. Initial bids for the Howe restroom, restroom renovations projects were received on December eighth, 2021. There were several bid packages for which no bids were received. These packages were rebid on January fifth, 2022, at two P.M. Bid packages received and listed for approval with a guaranteed maximum price total, eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand, twelve dollars. Adam Limming and Rick Scott Construction Incorporated will answer questions, if you have them.
Thank you, Judy. Um, and on this project, uh, we reviewed this with the property committee as well. We were able to secure an additional bid for, uh, tiling and, uh, tiling of the restrooms, and you'll see that reflected in the, the GMP there. Um, but this one is estimated still, as we're still waiting, uh, to secure one additional bid. And, uh, I think Stephanie and Rick Scott Construction are hard work at securing, um, potential vendors for that.
Adam, why don't you explain, so everybody will know what we're talking about, that you split this into two projects this summer?
Thank you. So, the Howe restroom renovations project is a very ambitious project that this district and Rick Scott Construction is wanting to undertake this summer. Um, this is renovating all of the student restrooms, um, student and faculty restrooms in the Howe building in the high school. Um, we are splitting that into two phases. We're doing an east phase and a west phase for the high school. This will be, uh, the larger of the two phases will occur this summer of twenty-two, and that will be on the east side of the facility. Um, and we anticipate, looking at the preliminary design and, uh, what we've got, um, just with the scale and scope of the project, we estimate if you were to split this into two percentages, this would be about sixty-five percent of the overall work that will need to occur in the Howe restroom design, um, with the remaining thirty-five percent occurring next summer of twenty-three. So, uh, I don't remember the exact number, eighteen bathrooms? Is it Stephanie this, or is, I don't remember the exact number. It, it's a considerable number of bathrooms, but it'll be on the east side of the high school.
Okay.
Stephanie, we're still ordering all the stuff we need for the second phase?
Um, well, that's still up for discussion. Um, we are, one thing that's true, all the dollar amounts are listed for phase one. We are looking at, uh, a couple of things. The toilet provision and the doors, there's not many doors, thankfully, because of the design, that can be really great for the high school with the toilet provision in particular, to make sure that that, uh, the color, our names are staying. And then, potentially, looking at ordering, um, this ceramic tile for phase six, um, who COVID has been super fun. Really weird things have come up, um, this continued ceramic tile and the floors and the walls, and, um, for the bathrooms. That, we've had several projects, I know Tyler has had several projects where some of this tile gets discontinued just from one year to the next. So, those are two specific things that we're looking at. I think everything else will probably be fine. However, um, we will ask, depending on how the money ends, we will also ask, um, for pricing for materials from the plumber for all the plumbing fixtures and the electrician, for all the electrical fixtures, um, just to see where those costs land. And that may be a recommendation that we bring to you guys, um, and you all would just keep and store those materials.
Yeah, I think that's a big, big plus, 'cause Rob and I have been talking about that. And I think you, we need to get that, 'cause if we can, we gotta save money. In twelve months, it's gonna.
Right.
I'm scared it's gonna try to double or something. You never know what's gonna happen. So, if we could do that, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. And we will bring those to the property committee and then bring it before this board.
So, you're basically bringing a GMP for two separate projects. This would be in the east side, the first one. The next one won't come till later.
Correct. Yes, yes. And, uh, this will be kind of an interesting deal, too, as we look at unit pricing and then how we wanna word that and massage that into, um, phase two.
But the estimates are below budget?
Yes, sir.
The two combined?
Yes.
The biggest thing is, when you bring us those extra prices, that'll be another agenda item, and then we'll have to prove at that time.
Absolutely.
And I think we need to look at that real seriously, though. If we can get them, that'd be great.
I think, yeah, speaking of what you're saying, Don, I think if we pursue that.
It's gonna be the same.
It'll be considerable savings to the district and, and a better service for our community and students.
And according to Brenda, we have plenty of money coming.
Yeah, we got plenty of money for it.
That's good, 'cause I'm spending it.
Make a motion to take action on five?
I think we've already got it, don't we?
Uh-uh.
What, we don't?
Need a second.
Second.
Call for the vote. Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Truett?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Okay, number six, consideration and take action on accepting sub, subcontract bids for the Lincoln Elementary Renovation Project per Construction Manager Report. Initial bids for the Lincoln Elementary Renovation Project were received on December first, 2021. There were certain bid packages for which no bids were received. These packages were rebid on January fifth, 2022, at two P.M. Bid packages received and listed for approval with a guaranteed maximum, maximum price total, one million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and six cents. Adam and Rick Scott Construction Incorporated will answer questions.